I'm going to call to order the Carson City Airport Authority meeting of Wednesday, August 18th, and have a roll call and determination of a quorum, please.
Chair President Golden.
Here.
Vice Chair Pulitz.
President.
Treasurer Rogers.
Here.
Member Jones.
President.
Member Hamilton.
Here.
Member Hutter. A quorum is present.
Thank you so much, Danielle. John, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to move on to approval of the minutes of the past Airport Authority meeting of July 21st. I trust everyone has had an opportunity to read through those minutes. Any comments on that?
I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, John. Motion and a second to approve the minutes of the July 21st meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved. Modification of the agenda. We won't be modifying the agenda, however, I do want to point out before we get there that item number three will be removed from the agenda when we get there. I will make a brief comment about why when we get to item number three, okay? And we'll be able to carry that over into our October meeting. Public comment. Members of the public who wish to address the Airport Authority can speak on any agendized and non-agendized matters related to the airport. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic, and if your item requires any extended discussion, you can let me know to calendar the matter for a future Airport Authority meeting if it is something that should be agendized. Just to note, we are not accepting any public comment any longer by phone. We're under no obligation to do so, so public comment must be made in person or in writing. I have not received any written public comment to date for this evening's meeting. However, if there are any members of the public present who wish to speak to us this evening, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll move on to our regular meeting and public hearings. Oh, I'm sorry, before we do that, I forgot something here at the very bottom. Want to take this opportunity to recognize both Tim Pulitz and Corey Jenkins. Tim, you have served us tremendously volunteering your time relentlessly as airport manager for the past four to five months. We can't begin to thank you enough. We're going to be thanking you in a particular manner going forward. We're going to surprise you. But I want to publicly recognize you for what you've done and working with you, always a pleasure, you know, but it's been more of a pleasure, you know, the past few months to work even more closely with you. I want to thank you on behalf of the authority. I also want to welcome Corey Jenkins, our new airport manager. Good evening, Corey, thanks for being with us, and we're happy to have you aboard.
Thank you very much, I'm happy to be here.
Okay. Now we'll go into public hearings. Agenda item number one for discussion, possible action to consider the best use of the COVID grant funds. Going to turn this over to John Rogers. And just a quick note regarding our counsel, he is absent as a family matter he's attending to, and he should be back at work next week, but he's unable to be here this evening and ask that, you know, we excuse him. I told him we certainly would. So, John, would you like to explain the nature of this issue?
Thank you, Chair Golden. Anybody, any of all of us who read the news know that the federal government has had done three tranches of coronavirus relief legislation, and those, all three of those tranches resulted in a grant from the FAA to most airports around the country, including ourselves. So, we have gotten three different grants from the FAA, all intent, all as part of the national coronavirus pandemic relief. One of, there's a summary of the three included in your packet. The first one of the three we got last fall for $69,000. That, the description of what that money was for was, or the intent of that money was just to compensate airports for potential, for lost revenue due to the fact that the economy tanked. And so, the stated purpose for that grant was to, that it could be used for airport operational and maintenance expenses or debt service payments. So, they left it very wide open, they just wanted to compensate the airports for any loss of revenue. We did get reimbursed for that grant. Ninety-plus percent of the reimbursement was for wages for, and the rest was for administrative costs. That's outlined in your summary. We are still sitting on two more grants, and the second two grants were almost identical in the way they were described. The intent for the grants was to provide funding for costs related to operations, personnel, cleaning, sanitation, janitorial services, combating the spread of pathogens at the airport, and debt service payments. So, they, those, the second two grants were written identically, and they are a little bit, slightly more specific on what they want, and they mentioned that in their definition of what they want, saying that we are, they want us to focus on reducing or combating the spread of pathogens at our airport. And so, we've had discussions about, and I, and I, and I know that Stan has had similar discussions on the city level about what's the correct use for these funds. I see no, personally, I see no substantive difference between the second two grants and the first in terms of what we should use the money for. I still think we should use it for, primarily for payroll, because the cleanliness of the airport, the ability for us to control pathogens, the airport depends on the work that Rick and Corey are going to do to keep the, you know, the terminal building clean and everything in order. And so, I think we should, so I think we should submit these grants or get reimbursed for these grants on the same basis as the first one, although we certainly could consider including the cleaning bills that we get. We do have a cleaning service that comes in once a week, and we get bills for that. It's not a ton of money, doesn't cost us a lot, but we could certainly include that in what we submit to the city for reimbursement. So, I'm not sure whether, you know, how, you know, how much discussion this deserves, but there, you know, there have been opinions wrought forth about what's the correct use for this money, and so, we thought it'd be worth a brief discussion here. And the object of our efforts is to give Corey, our new airport manager, clear direction on how we, you know, what expenses we want him to submit to the FAA for reimbursement for these two grants.
Thank you, John. Any comments from other Airport Authority members? John, can you then make a motion, if you will, to determine how you want those funds applied? Yes? Yes, sir.
Can we buy equipment with this, any of this money? I mean, equipment that's related to cleaning, or?
Absolutely. I mean, we can use it for any authorized airport expense per the FAA.
Do we have any need? Rick? Oh, it's new, it's new to everybody, Rick. No, I'm not trying to put you on the spot either, no. I know you've got, in the second item here, you're talking about the other thing, which I totally support that. I just wondered if there's anything related that we could add.
Might I suggest that we move to approve the use of the CARES Act Airport Coronavirus Response and Airport Rescue Grant Funds for operational expenses, including but not limited to payroll, utilities, service contracts, protective equipment, and supplies? So, I will call that my motion. I'll make that motion. Anyone want to second that?
Second, I second that.
Okay. So, we have a motion if, a second, let me repeat the motion. I move to approve the use of the CARES Act Airport Coronavirus Response and Airport Rescue Grant Funds for the purpose of funding for costs related to operations, including personnel, cleaning, sanitation, janitorial services, combating the spread of pathogens at the airport, and debt service payment. We can use these funds for, again, payroll, utilities, debt service, and items generally having a limited useful life, including personal protective equipment and cleaning supplies. Okay? So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
I would like to just say that from a timing standpoint, we do have four years to spend the money, but I'd personally like to see us, I'd like to see our new manager, you know, accomplish submitting the request for reimbursement some before the end of this calendar year.
Okay. Thank you, John. Item number two, this is one that I was hoping to have done last month, but here we are, it's going to be done this month, so a few weeks off is okay. Discussion and possible action to approve, option two of the vegetation control proposal, approve the expense and purchase of necessary equipment and supplies and direct staff to purchase approved equipment and supplies. Going to turn this over to Rick Lee and Corey Jenkins for presentation.
Thank you, Chair Golden, board members. I'm Rick Lee, Carson City Airport Maintenance and Operations. Just want to hit a few of the high points from our vegetation control proposal. The scope is to achieve a 20-foot-wide vegetation-free area along all airfield paved surfaces, taxiways and runways. We want to do this by using the application of pre-emergent and post-emergent herbicides, hopefully beginning in January, February of 2022. By doing this, we hope to reduce the infield mowing time and eventually eliminate trimming around the individual edge lights and signs on the airfield. There's, there's over 650 lights and signs on the airfield, and it's a, it's a real time-consuming process, both in mowing and then coming back and trimming each light individually to, to get all that done. Whereas if we use the proposed equipment, a tow behind spray trailer, and eliminate the vegetation in those areas, it'll save countless days. Application using this trailer, I would estimate would take two to three days using the tow behind spray trailer, you know. The cost for the equipment is approximately $15,000. The cost for the herbicide would be $4,000 for a season, and that's the pre-emergent and a post-emergent herbicide. So, pending any questions, that's all I have.
No, I, I sure don't have any questions. Just wanted to get a idea. Cost, scope, work, and timing, I think you weighed it out perfectly. Thank you, Rick.
You're welcome.
Corey, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
I don't have anything that needs to be added to that. I'm available for any questions.
Okay.
Corey, would you please explain to us the possible unintended consequences as it relates to the benefits that we will be having to investigate along this path?
Sure, absolutely. So, anytime you clear out vegetation, you have the potential of causing a dust hazard and the potential to contribute to erosion. We will negate this by doing this in a test area first, and we will determine if anything would need to be done to prevent those hazards, and we'll figure that out with that test that we would do. But I think it definitely needs to get done, so we should try to move forward with it.
Okay. I noticed in the proposal too that there would be the use of gravel and/or aggregate to cover the dirt area. That would probably suffice for dust remediation, I'm thinking.
Those are definitely potential solutions, if it's even needed. You know, we consulted with our, with Armstrong, and they agree that by doing this test, we can really make a determination if that's even needed at all.
Okay.
And there are other options out there that we can look into, you know, we would definitely look into the best option for least cost.
Okay. Quick question for you, Rick.
Yes.
So, we're talking about killing the weeds, right, and preventing them from coming back. How do we get them out in the first place? You going to cut them down, haul them off, or?
Yes, what, what I would do is, by the time when we, when we go to do the initial treatment with the pre-emergent, I will have finished my, my final cut during the infield mowing, so any, any vegetation that's out there will be approximately three to four inches tall.
Mm-hmm.
And, so, we'll, we'll apply the pre-emergent, which hopefully will keep any new, new growth from coming in the spring. Any growth that does survive, either the mowing or the pre-emergent, we will hit with a commercial-grade roundup-type product, get it killed off. We're going to spray it while it's, while it's small, you know, before, before it reaches any significant height. And, and basically, it'll, from that point on, it should die off and, and, and decompose.
Any questions, comments from members of the Airport Authority? John?
Just to be clear, Rick, you have three, you're quoted for three different pieces of equipment, which one are you recommending that we go forward with and why?
The, the one I'm recommending is the McGregor 300-gallon tow behind model. The, the main reason I, I favor that is I used a similar McGregor trailer at my past employment, and they've had that piece of equipment in service since 2007. I spoke with the manager of the airfield maintenance at Reno Tahoe, and they've had no major mechanical issues with that. It's, it's given them good service, it, it, it works well, it does the job that they need to do. They were using it in a real similar application to what we're going to use it for. I felt it was the best suited, and I think for the long term was a, was the best quality product for us.
Thanks, Rick, I have a comment. Just for the record, both Rick Lee and Corey Jenkins have many years of experience at managing the operations and safety of airports, and after Paul Hamilton, I had, had discussions with both of them, I'm very confident in their analysis, I'm very confident in their experience, and I would absolutely support their recommendations as a board member to pursue what they feel keeps our airport more, more professional and more safe.
Anyone else? If not, yes, sir.
As far as the training, to be able to, be able to handle these pesticides, how is that going to, going to pan out as far as getting, getting that done, say, before we start this? Are we scheduled for that?
I think there's still a large enough time window for that. The cooperative extension of the University in Nevada and the Nevada Department of Environmental Protection offer online training. They currently don't have any in-class on the schedule right now, but there is online training available, so that can be taken at, at any, any time. So, there's a training that you take, there's an online course, and then a test, and if you pass that, that exam, then you're given a pesticide applicator's license. It's good for four years. And during the course of that four years, they have sustainment training classes that you can take to keep that license current, and if you get enough of the credit hours during that time, they'll renew your license. If you don't, then you can retake the test and get it extended another four years. The cost is $50 for the test and license.
Just one last comment. Of course, I've been after this for a couple of years here, and I've been following their progress and what we've been looking at and how we're doing it, and I'm thrilled that we're, we're, we're going to get there.
I think we are. So, at that point, I'd recommend somebody make a motion.
Okay, I move to proceed with the manager's recommendation to approve option two of the vegetation control proposal, approve the expense to purchase the equipment and supplies and direct staff to purchase the approved equipment and supplies.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to proceed with the management's recommendation to approve option number two of the vegetation control proposal, approve the expense to purchase the equipment and supplies and direct staff to purchase the approved equipment and supplies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, item number three, as I mentioned, this is going to come off the agenda for any possible action. By the way, thank you, Rick. Appreciate you. Yeah, really appreciate you showing up tonight to help us out. Thank you. This is regarding, item number three is regarding the cooperative agreement between the airport and the municipality of Carson City, and the reason we're taking this off the agenda is as follows. I, I need to give you a quick update, but we can't take any action at this time. The agreement is what I would call half-baked. It's not quite ready for prime time. As I said, Steve is our point person on this. He is unavailable to address some of the matters that were brought up. I pinch-hit for him in his absence. I spoke with Danielle in the district attorney's office. We communicated via telephone last night and as recently as today via email. There is one outstanding matter that we're not in disagreement on, we just can't confirm it, and because we can't confirm the means by which the airport collects fuel taxes from the state, we're unable to ratify this agreement at this time. So, we agreed that we would put this off until our September meeting, at which time Steve and Dan will have had a chance to discuss it, and we can move forward. All the other changes that we've proposed back and forth have been agreed to, in essence. Conceptually, we have an agreement, we just need a clarification on one matter, and neither of us is able to clarify it, so. Any questions about that?
I talked to Dan about this today. And he said that he and Steve were in pretty much agreement on everything.
Yep.
And he didn't mention this, but I just talked briefly to him.
Yeah, and we're definitely in agreement with him. It's just one item that needs, we need some clarification as to where the money is going, how it's getting into our account, and we don't know. And I think Steve has some knowledge to that effect that can help finalize this agreement. Just for your knowledge, everybody on the Airport Authority, I had asked that the agreement be printed in color. It is. So the blue-red lines, if you will, or the blue line changes were from Dan Yu. The red changes were generally from Steve unless there is a strike through. I may have that incorrect. The red is from Dan, the blue is from Steve. So that's how that works. I would recommend everyone read through it. I don't see anything wrong with the agreement. Dan even agreed to a change that I had requested that was paramount to the agreement. He consented to it. Like I said, one outstanding matter. We just can't approve it until we get some clarification. So that's where that stands. And that's why we're pulling it off the agenda. Finally, item number four, we don't have to do this. When I put this on the agenda, I didn't really think about the numbers. And I did talk to Carl since then. I will not be present in next month's meeting. Not a big deal. Everybody else can carry on without me. Carl will be here. Carl will not be here in the October meeting. I plan on being here in the October meeting. Bottom line is, that means we will have five members, provided nobody for any other reason is not here next month. Now, if anyone has a conflict right now with the date next month, now would be a good time to bring it up. Yes. If not, I would say continue on. I don't need to be here. I'll still work on the agenda with Tim and with Corey. And then whatever the authority decides, we decide. So, everybody okay with keeping the meeting date on the 15th?
That's fine with me.
Fine with me.
Okay, good. Well, again, we'll have a quorum. There will be five. I won't be here. Steve will be here. And this last item we discussed should be, well, it's going to have to be on the agenda for approval, the cooperative agreement, a final version of it. So. Now, I know that Chris Knox is on the line.
Nadine, I think.
Oh, Nadine is? So if we can tie her in for Airport Engineers Report, that would be fantastic.
Hi there, Nadine is here.
Hey, Nadine.
Hey. I don't think Chris is on. He's, I believe, in another meeting right now. So the, not too much has changed from last month. The runway pavement maintenance project, we're still waiting on those signs and the tentative delivery date is still mid, not mid-December, mid-September. And that hasn't changed in the past week or so. So we're still going to do the permanent marking and sign change in one swoop, one closure. As far as the snow removal building, equipment building, again, no real changes there. We'll slowly move towards getting that special use permit taken care of. And Corey, I will reach out to you here soon to help with reviewing those documents. The AWAS relocation, again, nothing really moving on that as of right now. But as we get closer to getting everything approved on the planning side, I think that's one of the things we're doing this fall. And the snow removal equipment itself, I believe a couple of you are meeting with Mike, Dick and tomorrow to go over more of the purchasing process on that. And then the last, but definitely not least, the aeronautical survey. We are working with lean engineering, who is working with Wood Rogers to do that survey. And it's going to be a matter of timing it between the end of October, which is their time limit as far as it goes in the fall. But as soon as the smoke clears up as well. So we have a little bit of a window in there for when we're smoke-free and before that fall deadline. So that's kind of where we're at on that. If you guys have any questions, I can answer anything for you.
John?
Nadine, on the AWAS relocation project, is that a typo in the second bullet item? I mean, I'm not really sure how to interpret that. It says that we're planning on, that the project will be funded in FY 2022. Is that, that's this year? I mean, right, this is FY 2122. Is that, is it this fiscal year or the 2223?
No, it's, their fiscal year is different than ours. It's calendar 22.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, so are we shooting to get this done between now and June 30th of 2022 or not?
I don't know if it's June. I believe the FAA fiscal year is October, starts in October, or something like that. So it would be, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact dates, but it's not, it's fiscal year 22 in the sense that it's probably going to move again in the fall or winter of 21. If that, that doesn't make, sorry, that doesn't make much sense, but that's when their fiscal year starts.
So if they start talking about funding it in the beginning of their fiscal year, which is later this calendar year of 2021, then would it be reasonable to expect that we can accomplish it in the first half of calendar 2022?
That would be, yeah, that would be reasonable to anticipate that. Yep, I think so.
Great, thanks for the clarification.
Yep.
Any other questions for Nadine?
Oh, thank you, Nadine.
Appreciate you holding on the line there.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah, Nadine?
Oh, no problem.
We thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay, you too now. Well, moving on, Corey? Your first time, Airport Managers Report, lay it on us.
Well, thank you very much. I'm very happy to be here. So for starters, we have some information on fuel flowage. So we collected fuel flowage fees of $1,681.40. That's a year-over-year change of 34% increase. It's primarily due to jet fuel sales. As far as managers report, I'm just going to go through some of the tasks that I've worked on since I've started. There's been a lot more than this, but this is what I was able to put together. So I've set up with Citibank, set up with the access to the accounts and with the credit card. I've met with consultants and vendors, including Armstrong, Kaufman, Nevada Department of Transportation, Bullis and Co., and Nevada Payroll Services. Also, I have done a lot of familiarization with airport operations and maintenance responsibilities and airport equipment. I made sure that Rick signed me off for driving on the airport. I'm also set up for issuing NOTAMS. I'm very familiar with that system. I've updated the signage in the office. I've also updated some other signage around the airport. So I've received training on Aero Tracking, which is the ADS-B tracking system, and I'm also very familiar with that. I've received the training on the camera and gate access system, and I've been issuing gate cards. And I've also been updated on the Carson Tahoe executive projects. I also have some information today on the CFA survey proposal. So we received an initial proposal and we got an updated proposal today. The bullet points that I have here are relevant to the initial proposal. I'll kind of cover them a little bit here. So this is for the triangle lease area to determine boundary lines. The original proposal was for $8,500. And I had taken a close look at that, and it looked like that that value could be reduced by reducing the scope of the survey. And also, there are three sections of that survey that could have been separated out. All that ended up being correct, and the new proposal is for $3,200 to accomplish our goal of determining the boundaries of that triangle lease area. That's the one they gave us the update on? Okay, okay. So that means that it lowered the scope of the project, which I did think was possible. And then also for July, there was a total of 3,128 aircraft operations, according to the ADS-B data that we collected. And I have all of this data attached in the board packet. Thank you very much.
Questions and slash comments, since I've been privileged to sit down in the office and work with them on all these things. First of all, I want to tell you that it's been a pleasure working with Corey. He's a fast learner. He has good background. He has understanding of what we're trying to do. If he doesn't have familiarization, he makes it very clear, so we get into the depth of the training. In reference to a few things we're doing, the land surveyors, because in the last meeting we did approve to go forward with the survey, but the price came a little higher than we thought, we were concerned a bit about going over the $5,000 guideline without a board approval. So we took, as a group, the proactive steps of breaking it out into different segments and changing the scopes, as Corey mentioned. And we've been, we've been, I feel we can go ahead and just have them continue with phase one right now without having to have a board vote, because it's already voted on last month. So that's what I intend, Corey and I intend on doing, is just letting him go. And then we're going to refine the remaining triangle. There's just some clarification still on the boundary lines, which we're working up to just up to this afternoon even. We're still working on it. So unless any of we have any issues, we're going to just go forward and get that thing started, as we promised last meeting. Because we do want to show CTE that we're taking every possible step to promote this investment in the airport. So that's, that was our thought on that. And we just have some recent information just today that's in the board packet. We added on email correspondence clarifying that breakdown of the scope. So you can just take a look at it at your leisure. It's not a critical thing. The rest of Corey's training is just going so quick, so quick. It's going to be nice that he'll be able to start to using his own skills and his own, he has a lot of thoughts about things that are done that he thought we might want to consider doing differently going forward. But he's trying to prepare right now. He wants to know what he doesn't know. And then once he gets in, he's going to start proposing some ideas that we've shared about, that he thinks might improve our airport operations and perhaps tenant satisfaction. So we'll be hearing from him, I know, over the next several months on that. The report is all in favor of his skills and his training. So I'm just very happy to announce that.
Thank you, Tim. And again, Corey, welcome aboard. It's good to have you here. Yes, John?
Going back to the survey, just so I am clear. We're going to proceed with getting a survey, the survey done on the land east of Bravo. And is it reasonable to expect that that would be completed before next board meeting?
I will get back to the board as soon as I find out their schedule. They wanted to get on the books, but we had to give them the go-ahead based on, and so it's not just that. We want to continue the whole project. This is just starting with Bravo, and hopefully by the next week, we're going to be able to have the scope for the triangle and have them just move right on over there and get it done.
Are you going to bring before the board the costs for the work in the triangle at the next meeting? That's the intent?
It might be well within our approved limits where we don't have to. But we'll share that information with you all, and you tell us if you want it to be approved or not.
That's the best way to do it.
You're the more of an expert than I am.
Yeah, and we had approved the work with an existing engineer. The surveyor isn't an existing engineer technically. And we have, yeah, we have the ability to expend funds. Corey has the ability to expend funds up to $5,000.
I did receive, Armstrong would have subbed that out regardless. And I did receive Armstrong's approval of using CFA as a, as a land surveyor in this project. And they would have done something, they would have outsourced it anyway. So, yeah, we're all in compliance. I'm glad you pointed that out, because I had to go back in my notes too.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you again, Corey. We have no legal counsel report this evening, as Steve is in absentia. Treasurer's report, John?
Corey and I and our bookkeeper are deep into the audit process for last fiscal year. We have to have a completed audit in place by late October. So we're doing discovery now, an immense amount of, you know, finding various pages of paper and delivering them to our auditors. Everybody's comfortable that we're on schedule, but that is consuming quite a bit of time. Just thought I'd note that. The P and L and the balance sheet are in front of you. There's no surprises in there. I can say that my goal for next meeting is to go back to where we have been in the past, where we do a budget versus actual analysis for the group every meeting. We should be there by the next meeting. We just have to load in the budget numbers. But I also, my other intent for this year, early this fiscal year, is to have the AAP project numbers be easier to read, easier to understand for both us and for the bookkeeper and for the auditor. And so we have a plan in place on how to accomplish that, and we're going to execute against that plan over the course of the next couple of months. So that's it.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. As always, very fine job. Really appreciate your work. Report from Airport Authority members. I have one important report to give to everyone, however. Paul, anything you want to add to the discussion? Stan?
Paul always talks. I, you know, we discussed a new sign and some environmental appearance look. I'd like to continue on with that. And there's got to be money out there, all this money that's floating around, you know, from our congressional delegation, from the American Cares Act and all that. There's got to be some money that we can get for that. And I'd like to pursue on that.
Okay, I have something to report to that effect. Tim?
No, I'm done. Thanks.
Okay, John?
I'm good.
Okay, I will give my report then. Hopefully, Stan, hopefully, you read the letter that I drafted on behalf of the Airport Authority that went to our congressional representatives. Representative Amadee and both of our Senate representatives received a letter from me as Airport Authority Chair on behalf of the Airport Authority, seeking the kind of funding that you're discussing. I had done that at your suggestion. You had definitely received a copy of it via email, right? And I want to report, excuse me, I have good news to report on that front. While I have not heard back from Senator Masto's office or Mark Amadee's office, I have had a significant amount of correspondence with Jackie Rosen and her office. And... And she would like to meet with me personally at the airport. And so I'm gonna either be meeting with the senator or her associate that deals with transportation infrastructure in Nevada, and I'm going to do it at the terminal building, which I felt would be the perfect backdrop to make the point of what we're trying to do. And so as soon as I have that scheduled, I will let you know. And I had already informed Mayor Bagwell of that, and she's on board with what we're trying to do there. So that process that you're suggesting, that suggestion you have, it is in motion.
Well, and Steve made a comment, I think it was, I saw a lot of, we gotta start earlier in the year. You know, Amadee came to Carson City, I think in February, and we're anticipating money either from him or the two senators. And it might be combined or separate, I don't know. I think we gotta start communicating with those people early in the year when they first start budget preparation.
Sure.
And I'm not criticizing, because this is the first step, and this is ongoing. You can't make a step once.
And walk away from it. Yeah, you gotta continue the dialogue.
Exactly, exactly. But I know there's money out there, and we might as well get it if we can.
Well, as I said, I took your suggestion to heart, and you saw the correspondence that went out to our congressional representatives. I outlined the challenges that we face and the fact that we are the state capital of Nevada, and that our airport needs to be representative of that fact, and we're seeking their assistance. So I will report back as soon as I have something set up with Senator Rosen's office. And again, I plan on meeting at the terminal building to ensure that they get a true picture of our needs.
When is this agreement? What's the dead, drop-dead date on this being approved?
The cooperative agreement? November 17th. So this needs to be approved by the Airport Authority and the District Attorney's Office well in advance of that date so it can get on the Board of Supervisors meeting. We don't wanna have it come, right. Exactly, exactly. We were trying to get it done now, as I explained to Dan, and he understood what we were trying to do. Unfortunately, we had this one holdout issue that we need clarification on. So, yes, John?
On the, on the terminal project, we submitted a summary of what we wanted to do to the city as part of a grant process that they were working on. Have we heard any feedback at all?
Zero.
Okay. Stan, are you, I mean, are you, are you aware that we did that?
We did submit, early in the year, I had taken it upon myself to piggyback on a grant request process that was brought to my attention by Stephanie Hicks and by Mayor Bagwell. And I was told, hey, this is a good opportunity, get this in. And we had sought grant funding right then and there for the terminal building, for the landscaping, for the new sign. And that was, probably took place in March. It went with the city.
It was, it was through the city.
It went through the city, but it was, it was called a CEDS, Grant, Community Economic I forget what the S stood for. But it was CEDS, and every department in the city was requested to put out a request for funding to get into the federal program. Unfortunately, we never received anything back from the federal government, even an acknowledgement. But again, that's not uncommon when you think about all the municipalities, all the public agencies that put in for these things.
We did get, we did get feedback from the city saying that they had received our paperwork and had included us in on their grant request.
Absolutely.
But then, then it's been silent since then.
Yeah, yeah. It, with Stephanie, Nancy, and Lori, okay? And they reviewed, I had written the grant request. It was a very basic form. I had written the request. We had made some changes to it collectively and then submitted it. And I think we submitted three different requests for three different projects, the terminal building being the largest of the three, but also landscaping, signage, the snow removal equipment building. Trying to remember what else, but there were three projects, we submitted three distinctly separate applications. So we know they were received. Yes. Yep. Yeah, we just got, it's not uncommon when you put in these grant applications that you receive zero communication back. It just goes into a gray file. You just, as you mentioned, you just have to keep at it. Go, go on to the next one, don't wait. You're welcome. Okay. Seeing that there are no members of the public present to comment this evening, if anyone would like to have an agenda item for the next regular meeting, let myself or Corey or Tim know. We'll be putting the agenda together probably 10 days in front of the meeting. Meeting's on the 15th of September, so probably right after Labor Day, we're gonna wanna put that together. And on that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.